I'd like to call the City Marine City Commission meeting to order, Marine City Fire Department, Thursday, February 15, 2018 at 7:00 PM. Could we please stand for a prayer? Pastor Thang.
Father, you are worthy of our praise and respect because of who you are. Thank you for your love, mercy, and grace. Thank you for your blessings in this country, including the freedom to assemble and govern ourselves as this council is doing tonight. Now, Lord, guide this council, City Council, as they make decisions. Help them to listen to each other and to the people they represent with the intent to understand. Give them the wisdom beyond themselves to make the best decisions, bless their decisions collectively and individually, to continue the prosperity of Marine City. Amen.
Thank you.
And a flagrant lead.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Here.
Commissioner Avery.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Clausen.
Here.
Commissioner Leffler.
Here.
Commissioner Simpson.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
City Manager Leffler.
Here.
Can I get a motion to approve Communications? We have the Pension Board regular meetings, June 25th. Retiree healthcare regular meeting, July 25th, excuse me. Department and Activity Reports, Marine City Area Fire Run Report, Sewer Rate Computations for Cotterville Township, Sewer Rate Computation Estimate for Cotterville Township, year ending 2018.
Move to Communications as presented.
Support. Any questions or concerns, Donna?
Yes, I see.
Elaine, on your report, you have a thing in there for the Personnel Policy Manual that says no specific direction. The purpose was that the board wanted to eliminate it. It's kind of what was coming out. We're just waiting to get back to it. That's it.
Anything else?
What did she say? I can't hear.
She had a thing on Elaine's report about the Personnel Policy and Procedure Manual, the separation payout, and it said in there that no specific direction was given, and the direction that we all wanted at the time was to eliminate it.
Okay, thank you. There's probably other people that can't hear.
Any others as well?
Any other questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Carried. Moving on to public comment. Anyone in attendance is welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name and address, and please limit your comments to five minutes. Also, any of you here to -- we did not have the ordinance ready for the recreational vehicles, but if you'd like to speak during the public comment to put it on record, please do so. Anyone like to speak in public comment? Hearing none. Moving on. Approval of the agenda with a couple additions.
I move to approve the agenda with the addition of 9C, a resolution regards to the vacuum truck purchase, and 10C under new business, a resolution in regards to the Marine City Sambro ferry.
I would second that motion and add the 9A addition that we received. Thank you.
Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Carried. Need approval for the City Commission Regular Meeting Minutes, February 1st, 2018.
Move to approve the City Commission Regular Meeting Minutes, February 1st, 2018, as presented.
Support.
Motion support. Any questions or corrections on the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Nothing on the consent agenda. Unfinished business. We have the Friends of City Hall Lease 300 Broadway.
At the last meeting, we had discussion on this, and then you gave me some guidance. I gave a memo, February 7, 2018, and just went through some of the highlights on the cover memorandum, and the changes were made in the body of the lease provision. It's a 10-year lease. We've cleared up about the payment of utilities and the as-is occupancy. We are, I think that we have a few blanks to fill in, but I think we have a worthy exhibit at this point. We have a definition of the work that the lesssee will do at the site and how it will be approved and presented. We've addressed taxes in case they become an issue during the term of the 10 years, knowing that there are no taxes at this juncture, but you want to have that allocated in case the law, for whatever reason, might change. Insurance coverages, and then we added in the right of first refusal and rights to purchase at fair market value using an appraisal process. And it, I believe that satisfied all the concerns raised at the last meeting, and I do have some now, the Exhibit 2, which I think is 9A, and the appropriate drawings. I think the next step would be to, for me to finalize and incorporate any comments you have from this evening, and that we tender this version to the Friends of City Hall for their review. So we still have an opportunity to make additional thoughts and changes on this, and then present it to the Friends of City Hall for review, potentially approve it at the next, at the next meeting.
Any questions or concerns for the attorney on the lease?
Yeah.
Language or exhibits?
Just want a clarification on the highlighted ground plan. So that's referred to as the shared entryway. So I just want to make sure we have a conversation about the, what would be the, of that entryway, the northern wall, that's the existing, what used to be the glass block and doorway into the police department. I just want to make sure that that is not intended to be a shared doorway in, because that would affect the River Act Teen Zones' ability to insure and that kind of stuff. Obviously, the landlord would, of course, have access to that, but to allocate keys outside of a landlord or someone on staff or board of the River Act Teen Zone would cause us issues as far as insurance, and of course, you know, wanting to be responsible stewards of youth programming, we want to make sure that that's a controlled access point. So I just want to make sure that we have that conversation, that that, the intention is not to, you know, give, grant access to that particular doorway. Certainly, the exterior door and access to that vestibule to create that ADA accessibility is what the Teen Zones Board agreed to. I just want to make sure that we have that very specific conversation, because a highlighted line in a ground plan is one thing, but to have that conversation about what those boundaries are is another thing.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Clausen.
That entrance way, is that egress, ingress for both to go in and out?
Yes.
And then that door coming out of there is just going out, not in? It's an egress door.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of what it does currently.
Well, they show it's going in.
They show it going in.
I believe it goes out.
Yeah, it swings out.
That's a fair point, right? It should reflect appropriately in the document.
Yes, Lisa.
I have one other issue that I think we're missing, and I thought about this one.
Sure.
That particular building at the top houses our emergency siren at the top. It's a multi-directional. We use it for tornado warnings. We did have an issue with it about, I think it was about a year ago, that we found somebody had cut the wires going to it, cut it off. So we need to make sure that we protect that portion of it, because that is still...
It's one of two that we have in the city.
We have one over at the DPW, but this one is on top of that building.
Can that area be closed off?
I don't know.
It's my understanding that nobody is leasing the outside of the building.
The wiring is on the inside.
The wiring.
The wiring would have to be protected.
Does that go to the basement?
I don't know, because I know John Stevenson put it in, but all I want to do is make sure that that is secured so that it does not get cut again, because we went through a big process to get that all reconnected, and to make sure that that siren is continually working.
Mike's got a comment on that.
It's in the locker room.
Is that?
All the stuff's set to the police garage.
Okay, so we need to make sure that that locker room is, still belongs to the city no matter who leases what.
All right, so we'll just have an exclusion that says nothing in this lease creates any rights to that, to that action.
Okay. Okay.
Yes, Mr. Avery.
I don't understand the building that well. When you say that this locker room is in the police section, is that in the rec zone? Or is it?
Yes, that would be in the rec.
Okay, so it affects the other lease, not this one?
Which we're going to have to update also.
Right, okay, that's, that's...
We're going to have to modify the rec lease.
Yeah, that's fine. I just sort of thought that it was in the other area.
I'll probably put it in both leases anyways, just to make sure no one accesses it.
Right. Anything else?
I can get this wrapped up. I'll get it over to the, to the city manager, and intern can get it to the Friends of City Hall. We'll modify the rec lease, get it, and both of them should be ripe and ready at the next meeting.
Any other questions for the city attorney? All right, moving on then to...
Thanks for the guidance. I appreciate it.
Moving on to discussion on city offices.
I prepared a memo that outlines some potential options for future location for city offices, also including the Guy Center. I kind of itemized some of the major points regarding things that we would need in a municipal building to take into consideration, such as the location, ADA accessibility, heating, cooling, meeting space, parking. There are several things that I looked at, in addition to our current space, the Guy Center. I took a look at the Ward Cottrell School, Washington Life Center, and generally, we have commercial and industrial, both with very different factors to take into consideration if we were to purchase one of those two types of buildings and convert it into a city offices, and then also the option for new construction. What I did on the spreadsheet was I highlighted the outliers, so things that either are very negative or very positive. What I'm looking for today would potentially be focusing in on one or two options and seeing what we can do to move ahead with taking care of the space for city offices and resolving an issue that's been hanging out there for 13 years, almost 13 years.
I just want to say I really appreciate the chart. That's really helpful to me, and I would, I would like to see the Washington Life Center included, because it's the only one that doesn't have any red ink on it, and it also is equal to other, you know, other expenses for that. It's just something that, you know, I think it should be one of the ones that's kept.
What I don't see in the chart is how much space would be utilized in the Ward Cottrell School or the Washington Life Center. In other words, do we take over the building? Do we monopolize their function? You know, are we suddenly going to be primary?
I think with these two school options, really what it would be is our, just administrative offices. We would need some minimal storage space on-site, and we'd still be able to keep some stuff probably off-site. The one difference between the Ward, or of the Ward Cottrell and Washington Schools is that what I have proposed here would be leasing space in those buildings. One thing to take into consideration is whether you own or lease a building, there are building costs. The, the costs for the lease, in essence, would be through the rent as opposed to maintenance, so it's kind of the same. If we own the building, you have to pay for the maintenance costs. If you lease a building, you, in essence, pay for those maintenance costs through some type of rent.
The Ward Cottrell has most of the second story available.
Three.
Yeah, and it would be basically three to four classrooms plus the small, like a small principal's office upstairs that would be available, but I, we would have to have an elevator to get to.
Yeah, okay, I saw that, so I assumed the second. So...
Washington Life Center has three available...
Two or three?
Available classrooms, which would equal the square footage of what we have on the first floor. The two would be the exact square footage that we have on the main floor of the Guy Center at this time. But they're, they are trying to make available the third, a third room, which is directly across the hall, four stories.
Good.
And that's all ground floor?
All ground floor.
Yeah, that's, I know, that's an advantage.
All ADA compliant.
Which is a place.
And I assume that you have approached both of them, so this isn't a hostile?
Nope.
No, no. Nothing has been discussed as far as contracts or anything. It's just going and looking at the space, seeing what potentially is out there. I've kind of looked at some of the files for commercial and industrial buildings driven around. You know, generally, a lot of the industrial buildings are, you know, larger parcels, and they have like a small office and a garage-type space. A garage-type space would need to be converted into an office space. The one potential with an industrial facility, because it, you know, predominantly would be used for any type of, like, manufacturing or something like that, there may be some contaminants that would need to be dealt with. Commercial facilities, kind of a same-type scenario. Every building is unique, and that's something, if, if we saw something that maybe we wanted to pursue and see if it's an option, if someone would be willing to sell, or seeing what's on the market. Each individual place would have to be assessed with the constraints that are on that site. New construction, obviously, there's a lot to deal with there. Cost is probably the biggest factor, and then also time. Some ideas that I had heard potentially would be to lease a building for 10 years, and then in that interim term, use those 10 years to work towards a plan for a collaborative office that could house police and DPW and administrative offices. That, I think, was one of the things that seemed to be pretty well received at the public meeting that we had. People seemed to like that idea of having one-stop shopping for everything, but I think right now, that's a little out of our grasp. As a, as an option to do a 10-year lease while we move towards that, that's something to potentially consider. Guy Center, where we're at, there are some things that we know that we would need to do there. That's something, we can look into that and figure out the pricing. I mean, this is really something that collectively, as commission, looking to, to make a decision on how we want to move forward with this.
So a couple of things. I'm familiar with Ward Cottrell and Washington Life Center quite a bit, just because they list an audio system there. We saw that expense, just for anyone following along there. They may have speakers. Neither system would be probably usable based on what we would need for commission meetings and that type of thing. So the fact that that's on there, I just suggest we disregard that. Our biggest expense in an audio system would be the larger component of individual miking and those types of things. So that's going to be an expense no matter where we go, so I would just suggest we ignore that line altogether, because that's going to be an expense everywhere. I, I like the thought of pursuing the Washington Life Center. I love the fact that creating a partnership with, you know, at least Council on Aging, if not the Council on Aging School District and ourselves. I love the thought of accessibility, which is putting in some automated doors and those types of things. I like the fact that busing could be provided, because they already have programs every day. These are all very attractive things that I think go well above and beyond in providing accessibility, and they do a lot as a very vibrant place, so they've done a lot with that. I like that thought. Have we had discussions to details of meeting space and availability? I know when we were approaching them, working towards potentially securing a facility for the teen zone, that was one of the things that was a difficult conversation, was the availability of space. They do a lot of programming, and that's a wonderful thing, but we have things like, you know, the TIPF meetings and those types of things that are about the four o'clock hour, so not quite evening. Do we have conversations about scheduling and usage of that?
I have had some conversations with them. Obviously, we have a preset schedule for the year, which makes things a little bit easier from, from our perspective, working with them. They seem to be agreeable that they would find a way to make it work if, if it came down to that.
In general terms, and they're compatible with their...
Right.
We're not interfering with their, in general terms, what they have going on.
And they have, they also have some plays and stuff that are done there.
Yep.
And they feel that they could have them moved around the Thursday meetings, and then they would have the play during the, our off week.
Okay.
And they thought it was very, some of our early meetings, TIPF and Pension, may have to get slightly later at night, just, but it's still, it's still a viability. I have to keep them at the same time.
But obviously, that's kind of a one-time growing pain if, if that's decided, you know, for both groups, but just, I know they're a very busy facility, which is great, and we don't want to, you know, affect their offerings just as much as we want our, what we want to do as a city, being able to be accommodated as well.
They even talked about being accommodating for elections, which, after talking to Chris, the square footage here for two precincts, we're slightly under the minimum for...
Precinct one is a lot smaller on this side. This is precinct two, and we have to have a minimum space between the tabulators and the election workers, and we barely make that.
So the thought would be as if we had in there cafeteria space there, that gives us more square footage?
And with larger elections, we have, I found, we have to keep, this is my, the first presidential, I had to keep everybody in the hallway, let maybe seven or eight people per precinct come in at a time, because there's a lot of congestion, so...
I would like to express support definitely for the Washington Life Center. Everything that I'm hearing is positive on that. And then a question. If we, if the city made the move in to leasing the Washington Life Center, what would be the outcome of the Guy Center? What, would we turn that back into funding or...
I would think that we would continue carrying it on as a community center. Much like the Pavilion, it's something that we could rent out to help cover the costs. Obviously, that's something that we could set up as a scale on our fee schedule, you know, if, if you choose to do nonprofits at zero or reduced rate, something like that, you know, residents, non-residents.
Certainly, rec department programs could then be...
And it could also be used for, start festivals, for, you know, festival headquarters, you know, and have a central point to work off of for different events. Yes, Mr. Avery?
Yeah, I would like to continue on that line. We are going to be discussing some very large dollar and fee numbers for the road and infrastructure work. So that, that precludes the new construction as far as I could see. But the Guy Center appears to be the only prime thing that the city would have to sell and actually make some money, because it's on the water. If you're not on the water here, you're, well, I won't add the rest to that statement. So that is something we could use to generate revenue that'll help us with the massive amount of roadwork that we have. Thank you.
And they did, we, when we did speak to the Washington Life, they weren't against actually letting us name an actually area of the...
For the Guy family?
For the Guy family to fulfill their requests on their end, so they were open to that. Yes, Mr. Clausen?
I just have one question about the Washington Center. Here's, I've been there for several stuff, and you too. They want to give you three classrooms and a storage room? How are they working the bathrooms? Because a lot of them bathrooms in there are set down for the, the elementary school kits. They're lower fixtures.
Yeah. There would be private bathrooms for the city staff inside the offices, but then they would have the public bathrooms as, available for the, for our patrons inside the, would be the elementary bathrooms then, basically.
You're a little close to the ground if you're first.
Being one of the old folks that uses this facility, I would say we adapt well.
But I mean, the cost of renovating a facility or doing that, you know, adjusting fixture heights and, or even all-new fixtures is a small percentage of...
Yeah, you're talking, you're only talking, you know, the percentage of people there in there. One for every 25, so, for ADA, so that's, but just the bathrooms were made for an elementary school.
Would the arrangement be a sublease through the Council on Aging? Would it be through the school district? Has the school district been looped in on the conversations?
That, that would be...
To be determined.
Yeah, that would be something moving forward, that we'd work with the attorney and their organizations. Have had discussions with the, the school, so they're aware that this is something we've been kind of looking at as an option.
In general terms, were they supportive of it?
Sounds like it, yeah.
In the, in case there was any changes that we need to do to the building for our occupancy, they were all, the school district was for it. We actually talked to the superintendent directly, so...
Yes, Lisa?
I'm not real into the leasing thing. I know we got into that issue when they did the police department, and it turned into a big mess. And I don't know about how the community would feel about selling the Guy Center. I know you can make money off it, but that's, you know, but I don't see on here, I know this says new construction, but I don't see on here staying in the Guy Center and going for a new community center, which was something that the previous city manager looked at for behind the library, which he said he probably could do for about $500,000. So I don't see that idea in here either, and then that would keep you the cost, we're not leasing and renting, and our rent could go up and, you know...
But the cost of the Guy Center, we're still going to have to do the updates to, because we're...
Accessibility and...
Accessibility.
Yeah, you're still going to have to do some of the improvements, no matter what. Even if you leave it as a community center, you'd have to do it.
Right, we'd actually, you'd have to ramp or something on the front of it.
Yeah, well, so I mean, that's, you know, it's still a given, but I don't know if that's going to cost that much to do a ramp in the front to...
And an elevator to the basement?
Depends on how you use the basement. They didn't use it before.
But I'm talking about if you kept the city offices in there, the employees would have to be able to get to the basement via, if we ended up having one that was disabled, an employee or...
You could also put a lift on that stairs. Somebody else brought that up.
To the basement?
Yeah, it's a skinny stairway. I don't know that that's a...
I think we are narrowing this down quite a bit, and it might be appropriate to dig deeper into what can be done with the Guy Center, renovation, sale, whatever, the Washington Life Center, and actually come up with some numbers for us to look at at this point.
I also think if a building comes up for sale, like one did once before, and we missed out, we should also still look at that if, if the availability comes up.
Mm-hmm. But at this time, there wasn't anything available at this time?
Yes, unfortunately. That doesn't mean something won't come up, but...
You might want to have language in your lease that has an out, with, with certain notice. You're talking 10 years is a long time, but you can negotiate language that lets you make other decisions during the 10 years.
And the only other thing with the Washington Life Center, it's not real, you'll have to try to tell people how to get there, I mean, ones that are new, and then parking, parking gets pretty hairy over there at certain times when there's, they have functions going on over there, because I go over there a lot too, but it can get pretty filled up for parking.
I just wanted to ask if a 10-year lease is normal, or could we look at a five-year lease? It might be a little more expensive, but makes it easier to then plan for another option as we go along. I mean, I'm not opposed to buying another building, it's just I have no idea where you would do it and...
How long is the current lease that they, the Washington Life Center has with the school?
Approximately eight more years left on it.
So they have eight years left, so there's a possibility something could happen in that, and we might not make the ten years. Say the community grows, and they need another elementary school again, they might need that school.
I can speak to that. I've been part of the strategic plan committee for the district, and not that there's an official response of that committee, but they, their future proposed use shows a slight decline in numbers, and there is, more than likely, would be in addition to one of the, one or both of the elementary schools that feed into Marine City High School, since they have quite a bit of property. So they, you know, at least in all the paperwork that I have seen in the fourteen years I've been there, indicates that they don't have a future use for that facility as a school.
They might have to come up with a bond issue to add on?
The, the council on aging was in favor of extending, then they've already talked to East China about extending their lease to Matt, lease with the city, to avoid that same issue. So, we'd like to-
Should we focus down on those two?
To get more information.
Do you have a motion to do that?
No, not in motion.
To get some more real numbers. All right, now we're moving on to Resolution thirteen dash two thousand eighteen. This is a resolution for the purchase of the back truck.
I make a resolution to, a motion to approve Resolution zero thirteen of two thousand eighteen in regards to the purchase of the back truck, as discussed in our last meeting.
Support.
Any questions or concerns on the resolution? Hearing none. Is this a roll call vote?
Yes, it is. Commissioner Avery?
Excuse me, I'm lost. You're looking at our agenda.
This is the new one, nine C?
Oh, okay, fine. Understand. Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovely?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Hendrick?
Yes.
Ms. Hendrick?
Yes.
Ms. Hendrick?
Now, we're moving on to the conceptual collaboration of Marina and parking lots.
I've provided you with copies of a plan that I received from the property owner on the Bell River, just south of the bridge, with the mini-storage business. He has been looking to work with the city to provide some additional parking and access for a canoe-kayak launch, that would be ADA accessible. They, this would be a collaborative project, because we don't have the parking or the space to do an ADA access ramp on the property that we have there. The owner of the property wants to put in transient dockage, so he would be installing pilings and having boats docking along the seawall. He has about, I think, eight hundred feet of seawall there. And the additional part of this project would be putting in a parking lot and the canoe-kayak launch. What he's looking for at this point is at least the support of commission to move forward with looking, or working with the grant writer to explore grant opportunities for a project of this scope. We don't have any details yet about the use of the parking lot and how the partnership would work. That's something that we would still need to work out. But he didn't want to move forward with any of these plans if he didn't have general support for the ideas of it. And that's kind of what we're looking for here.
I like the whole concept of stuff. My only concern is long-term, what happens, you know.
And that would be something, the collaboration aspect of this parking lot. You know, who's going to be maintaining it? Who's going to be getting any proceeds if it's a pay parking lot? That, that would be the details that we need to work out.
And you don't know what type of grant, be a matching grant, some type of, or you have no idea?
Likely, yeah, yeah. This was one of the things that we were trying to get the recreation plan done, so that we could put in some grant applications. This is one of the ones that we're looking to potentially get in by April first. I don't know if we're going to have the, the level of detail that we need in time for that contract. And working with the grant writer, I'm not certain how much detail they need on the relationship between the public and private for the grant.
Would, is he looking for us to pay the entire match, or he?
No.
Okay.
No. So, where he's at now, you've seen the numbers that he's put together, is about three hundred thousand. The canoe-kayak launch is actually something that the county has funds, that they could purchase that for us. So, that's one less thing that we would have to actually pay for. But for him, he doesn't necessarily need the lot or the canoe-kayak launch or anything. He wants to move forward with the transient dockage. So, for him to be able to economically do this, you know, he would be spending about a hundred and fifty or so, just for what he wants to do. And the rest of it, the parking lot and everything, is something, in essence, that would be our kind of cost.
How would you deal with the liability?
That's a, that would be, I was just, that's a little tricky.
Yeah, it would be something that will have to be worked out.
Those are the type of things I'm looking at. I mean, I think it's, it's a neat proposal, but I got-
I don't know if we can make it work, but-
I got a lot of concerns about those types of things.
I think right now, we're just, is there enough, is there enough goodness behind this, just to maybe start answering some of those questions?
I think so. People stop all the time.
At this point, I, I would move that we support the exploration of the work as outlined in that ten-year document.
Support.
Yeah, that's just the same thing I was going to say. We, we express interest in it, add no liability to the city, at this point. I mean, what else is it?
Yes.
Yeah, I agree. I'm, I'm in full support of seeing what, what sort of details we can flesh out here. I like the thought of the partnership provided logistical concerns that Commissioner Hendrick just mentioned could be worked out. But I certainly respect the fact that the property owner doesn't want to get waist-deep in this without at least something ceremonial from us. So I think, you know, something that I've been hearing the whole fourteen years I've been out in this neck of the woods, is that people wish they had better access. As a property owner, he's already done quite a bit in the last few years to update that property, make it more viable. And the fact that there's a parking solution, potentially with this, is a great thing, because there's not a lot of parking in that area, too. So these are all potentially very good things, so.
As a kayak owner, I am very much in favor of this. I won't have to sneak up to East China and use theirs. And I think, I think it really is, I mean, we have got a perfect river there for kayaking. And trying to get into it, we have actually fallen over a few times, so I think it would be nice to have one of those.
Are you looking for a motion?
We have a motion.
Got a motion, okay. In support? Any other questions or concerns on it? Hearing none. All in favor?
Hard surface parking lot.
Um, I didn't, that, actually, I couldn't-
I knew we had an order to set the small parking lots, it's a heavy-
Was that supposed to be a hard-surface parking lot today?
Yes.
Did it specify, because he's got concrete now, I believe, in his parking lot?
Yeah, he was planning on concrete for the rest of it as well.
Yeah, just a suggestion that they might want to look at, too. I know there's a new surfacing that they have been using and trying out, because this is right next to the water, that allows the water to go through and sink into the water table. And it's not actually more expensive at this point. Just a suggestion that they might-
Semi-permeable.
Semi-permeable.
We did that, we did that for a shop here in town. We approved. Somebody already was doing that with a big area that they had-
The osmosis?
One of the shops, yeah.
He's actually got a planned filtration on site.
Any more questions or concerns?
Not yet.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Moving on to infrastructure improvements.
Well, but before you, you've got a memo that really shows the fact that we've been working on the groundwork for infrastructure projects in the city. Something that really takes a lot of forethought and planning, instead of just jumping right in and doing projects without really doing a thorough analysis of what we have. One of the primary drivers of that was the, the grant that the city received for the SAW grant, to do the analysis of the sewer system. In-house, we kind of springboarded and expanded that, and did a review and analysis of our water system and also our road systems. With, with that completed, now we have a better picture of our assets and the condition, and have put together a list of projects prioritized primarily based on, on condition and needs. You'll see that there's the local streets, major streets, and then the infrastructure top twenty projects that you saw at a previous meeting. For local and major streets, these are two different pockets of money that we get from the state, and there are restrictions on how you can use that, how much you can transfer between the two accounts. We get a limited amount of money, we have some in fund budget, or fund balance. One thing that, I guess, we're, we're looking for at this point is, how do we want to move forward now that we, we have all of this, this information, and we have a good idea of what we should be looking at and moving forward? One thing that I, I kind of recommended is putting together some type of board to take a, take a look at this from, from a wider perspective. Right now, this is, in essence, what DPW department sees as a prioritized list based upon what they're working on and their condition. Another set of eyes might see things from a little bit different perspectives, such as a resident that sees there's a lot of traffic on this road. An engineer might see it from a different perspective as well. One of the things that I was thinking that might be appropriate at this point in time is to put together a subcommittee to take a look at the lists that we've prepared, and work with our treasurer on the fund balance and the values that we have to be able to work on these projects, and put together a recommendation for the board to approve. I, I think that a good makeup for a subcommittee would be a board member, a DPW department, an engineer, and possibly a resident from two very different locations in the city, whether, whether it be, you know, one side or another of the city, a business area and a residential area, north, south. I'm not sure how we would want to split that up, but I think that that would be a way that you can ensure that you have these prioritized to the best that we can do.
Mr. Avery?
Would this be appropriate to discuss at this time, doing a bond issue, so that we didn't piecemeal this thing out, so it isn't eternal project of having roads torn up? That we actually look at a major one- or two-year program to, and that lets people vote on what they really want. Do you want it fixed up? Pay for it, or do you want to just keep going like we're doing and patch it?
That's something that we would explore with the treasurer, is the various options for funding it, whether it be either low-interest loans or bonding, going to a millage. One thing I caution is, we, we expended a lot of money on a bridge, which was, I think, five or six years ago, and, and people's memory are kind of short. You have rotation of people, they're moving in and out of town. And I would caution about going too long a term and getting us, us buried into something, and, in essence, forgetting about the work that we've done. We, we want to kind of stay current and, and always be on top of this. And we don't want to get in a situation where we, we do a project that has committed us to ten or twenty years, and we have a road that, for some reason or another, maybe we missed, and we don't have the opportunity to get to that for ten or twenty years.
Yes, sir.
I think it brings up a fair question. You know, we, we, especially in the recent six months, have been seeing list upon list of, you know, how bad infrastructure is, how old it is, and, and the price tag associated with that replacement. So I, I think, going from what Commissioner Avery said, it, it would be prudent to have, whether it's part of a committee or through city staff, a sort of a roadmap of how we might get to that financial obligation, to make things right with our infrastructure. You know, whether that's a ten-year plan or a twenty-year plan, and how much money, whether that comes from multiple sources via grants, bonding, whatever, low-interest zones, you know, planting a money tree on the river, whatever. But how much that would cost us in that ten-year, fifteen-year, five-year, whatever that plan is, to, to obtain that. Because I think that's part of the issue, too, is we have all these outstanding obligations, but, you know, we just keep kicking it down the road. So, what's much more difficult to put together is a roadmap of how to get there. So, once we figure out how many, how much money in a ten-year span, that, that's step one, and then we find out how we might be able to obtain that. So I think, I'm not sure if that's what Commissioner Avery was saying, but that's something I, I think that would be a very prudent next step for us, because how we, how can we act upon any of this? We know a long time that this obligation is out there, and it's just growing and growing. And then I agree with your point about needing to be able to respond to things that might pop up, but I think that's kind of our next step, really, is how big of a bear is this, and how are we going to pay to get the bear taken care of?
Yes, Lisa.
I got a question for Mike. You have your list here for, your cross-assessments for the road replacements, for water, sanitary, sewer, and storm, which obviously, we need to get those done first, before we worry about the road on top. What's, what's the timeframe, I mean, is there timeframes from the DEQ that says you have to get some of these done at a certain point?
No. The one thing they're worried about right now is lead lines. That's it. Any, any lines, we have to replace those.
So does that mean you have to look at, I, I know, I think I talked to you once before, about you have to look at every single one, whether you know you've replaced it or not?
Yep. Well, we got our list right now. We replaced seven hundred and fifteen already.
Okay.
So we have a list of how many we replaced, and I don't know how many was replaced before, you know, we started doing it. So we do have to go through, you know, dig up the stopbox, verify what it is, write it, and then make a plan, how we're going to change that.
But I, but what I'm saying is, you have two separate lists. One is just for milling and capping the road, and one is the total infrastructure underneath.
Yep.
Right. And the, the one, the milling and the capping were roads that we may be able to get fixed, because they're not having, you don't-
I don't have that many problems on.
The issues aren't underneath those roads.
Correct.
And we're going to have to be in a constant state of repair. I mean, and-
You're not going to do this all at once.
No, and I think, I think getting a small, even if we can get a handful of roads, you know, fixed per year, is still better than, you know, it's not kicking the can down the road, we're actually starting to make some, an attempt to do some, with the limited budget.
Right. Well, you know, you look at Bruce Carroll Brown Scott in Robertson. What was it, ten, twelve years ago, we did those streets?
Yeah.
And they have, you know, small mains on them, and we do have water main breaks on those streets, but it's not, we, we're not tearing up the whole streets. The streets like Union Street and South Market-
Or West Boulevard, South, South Main.
Yeah, those, those are streets we can't touch. Those we have to do something with. We have to.
Mike, isn't that some of the infrastructure that's from like the nineteen forties?
Yeah.
It's like that, the main and market stuff, the south end?
Yep, yep. These streets here, I feel that, on the locals, there's minimum stuff wrong with the streets. I mean, they, they still have water main issues. Every street does. So we can't, you know, just, but I feel these streets here, we can pick on and get a life of them for a little bit longer, till we get the other streets fixed, and maybe ten years down the road, come back, look at these streets again, and redo them.
I just have a request. As, as you are digging into some of the older areas, I, I know I would be glad to do it, and I'm sure there are people from Pride and Heritage, too. Occasionally, we run into something that's valuable in a historic sense, and that-
What, do you want a piece of wood, water main?
Well, no. One of the things, one of the things, like when they dug up Broadway there, they had the old wooden sewers down there. Yeah, it would have been nice to have one more piece of-
No, there was no wooden sewers down there.
Whatever it was.
That was a piece of wood and water main.
Piece of rail, piece of something. But what I'm saying is, just, you know, don't be afraid. There's the Historic Society, there's the Historic- There's the Historic Society, there's the Historic Commission, there's all kinds of people who would be interested in that if you happen to run into maybe a skeleton or something along that. But, you know, something of historic significance, I would be glad, and I'm sure there are people.
We do keep that stuff, we come across it.
He's everybody, yeah. If you find Jimmy Hoffa or something like.
Yeah, there you go.
I get the pay raise for if I find Jimmy Hoffa, don't I?
Only if you get the best to fix the area we tear up.
[laughing].
Yes, Mr. Avery.
Well, at this point, I would like to make a motion that this commission, as proposed by the city manager, be set up and start to operate so we can actually make a plan for this.
Some form of committee?
Yes.
Support? Motion support? Any other questions?
All in, all.
Wait, wait, wait. Just for the public, he's got some costs here, just so you know, he's got in here, it costs approximately 1.2 million to reconstruct one mile of a two-lane road, and it costs approximately 270,000 to resurface one mile of a two-lane road. So keep that in mind when you're looking at this entire town, of the costs that we're looking at. And that's not, that's just doing the paving. That's not.
That's three-inch.
Yeah, that's not doing all the.
How many miles of roads do we have, Mike?
Roughly 20.
20, 20 miles.
20 miles.
So, you know, this isn't cheap.
Would we be able to get a member to be the rep for the committee this evening? Or do you want to think about?
Got a volunteer that wanted to sit on the bill? Anyone else? All right. Anyone else? Any other questions or concerns on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thanks, Mike. Moving on to Resolution 14 dash 2018, a resolution in support of the Blue Water Ferry, a service connecting Sombra, Ontario to Marine City, Michigan.
I move that we approve Resolution number 014 dash 2018 in support of the ferry.
Support.
Support. Any questions on it?
Question? I'd like to see somebody read this tonight since it's new to us and for the benefit of the people out there. I know you don't like to read, Mr. Mayor, but.
But I will.
I'd be happy to read it if you want.
Oh, that's fine. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Marine City, adopting a regular meeting said commission held at the fire hall located 200 South Parker in Marine City, Michigan on this day, 2018, 7:00 PM. The following preamble and resolution were offered by Commissioner Lepley and supported by Commissioner Simpson, whereas the City of Marine City supports the Blue Water Ferry, a ferry service that crosses the St. Clair River connecting Sombra, Ontario and Marine City, Michigan. Whereas, Blue Water Ferry provides a much-needed economic link between Canada and the United States. Whereas, the Blue Water Ferry Service is an integral to the local business, its closure in January 2018 resulted in economic impact on the community. Whereas, the local businesses depend on a percentage of the business from Canada with an estimated annual financial impact of.
So numbers have been between 3 and 4 million, so I think we'll put that in there.
Between 3 and 4 million. Whereas, the residents of Canada depended on the city for certain services, including shopping, dining, and entertainment. Whereas, Marine City Highway provides a direct route for Canada via, the Blue Water Ferry is widely used by commercial trucks as well as personal vehicles. Whereas, the Blue Water Ferry provides an opportunity to strengthen ties between Canada and the United States, as witnessed in the recent community events between the two countries. Now therefore, it is to be resolved that the City of Marine City urges the government of Canada and the government of Ontario to assist in funding for repairs to the damage to the Blue Water Ferry dock, to enable it to resume necessary operations between Canada and the United States.
Just a brief question.
Sure.
Who are we sending this to exactly? Do we have a list? Do we have contact specifically of how we're targeting this?
Yeah, we're working with groups to put together lists.
So we don't have a list yet?
We don't have a list yet. I am going to forward this on to the county. Hopefully, the county will pass a matching resolution. We've been in contact with Senator Peters' office. He has a copy of this draft, and they'll probably be forwarding a letter in unison with this as well. So power and numbers, hopefully, we'll have our voice heard.
Thank you.
And I'll be forwarding it to Dan Lowers on Friday when he's in town.
Does anybody want to discuss, we had a meeting tonight? Anybody want to bring up the meeting that was held tonight by the business owners?
I'm just going to bring it up, very privileged.
All right. I'll let you do it.
Okay. Anyone else?
We'll need a roll call.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Lepley?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Vandabush?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to financial business disbursements, including payroll of $315,660.17. Ms. Lepley?
I move that we support the disbursements, including payroll of $315,660.17.
Support.
Motion for. Any questions or concerns? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Lepley?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Vandabush?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
No.
Commissioner Sears?
Moving on to preliminary financial report. Any a motion to receive and file?
So moved. Support.
Any questions or concerns on that? All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on to city manager's report.
Let me just do a quick highlight of some of the stuff in my report provided online. We've been working on the ordinance updates. Thought we'd have those ready for this meeting. Unfortunately, not quite ready. The beach parking should have something from Pat Phelan for the next meeting, that'd be March 1st. North Street, or North Mary Sewer Project bids or do March 1st, so we should have that at the second meeting in March for your approval. Obviously, just wanted to remind everyone, TIPA, the discussion for that is coming up in April, so we're getting close to that. Let's see, since my report, I've attended Homeland Security Emergency Management Meeting, Planning Commission, Transportation Meeting, and the Blue Water Ferry Meeting this evening. That's it.
Any questions for the city manager? Hearing none, we're going to move on to Commissioner Privilege. Mr. Avery.
I realize that there'll be several people discussing the Blue Water Ferry meeting that we had today, so I will be pleased to listen to what other people came up with that, and I have nothing else, so thank you.
As you know and may have noticed, we have had inclement weather, which upon looking it up, it means unmerciful, harsh, severe, and dangerous to bear. And in that inclement weather, we have had firefighters, police officers, and DPW out there working for us, and I just would like to thank them for the many times that they ventured out when we were home cozy at home. I'd also like to offer my prayers for all those affected by the school shooting in Florida, especially the first responders. They're the ones that get there and have those visions in their heads for the rest of their lives. And also, in the year 2018, already, we have had 18 school shootings in this country.
That's not documented, but.
I'll be brief just because the mayor said he was going to speak on this, but I had the pleasure of attending the meeting hosted by the Chamber of Commerce at Anita's in regards to the Blue Water Ferry outage. And I thought there's some great ideas brought up at that meeting. It was nice to have a lot of business owners and some citizens in there and some folks from outside of our region. So it's a really important issue for our town and in our Canada as well. We passed a resolution tonight, so I'm looking forward to seeing some more information coming from there, but I appreciate that they were open to inviting all of us, and it was great to hear the information that popped up there. I think there's some more work there to sort of hone in on the issues and the costs, but I would encourage everyone to follow along in the media and online because I think we should all weigh in and our support of this. It's an important link between the two countries and has, speaks a lot to the economy of our town, so it does have a direct impact even if you yourself do not use it to travel between. Our March 1st meeting, I have a work conflict that I've been trying for months to schedule around, and I just unfortunately won't, not able to reschedule that event, so I will not be in attendance, so I just want to let everyone know in advance.
Thanks.
I just want to thank everybody that came out to the Lions Wild Game Dinner last Monday night. A lot of good food, it was a great crowd, and it was nice to see all the support for the Lions. But we also have a 80's dance coming up February 24th. You can get your big hair on and come to the, yeah, they even have Boone's Farm to drink. So if you love the 80's, it's a good fun time. It's on February 24th. Get your tickets early. That's it.
Nothing. Okay. I've got a couple announcements. This one's from the clerk. Please announce that we need an alternate for the border review. Meets approximately four times a year. Real estate knowledge is helpful, but not mandatory. Also, I'd like to thank everybody for a very successful Fireman's Ball, 143rd Annual, and went over well, no issues. Snowed a little, but we got through it. Everything snows. We did have a good meeting today at Anita's over the support for the ferry. There was a lot of interesting conversation. Some ideas, are they practical? Maybe not, but they may lead to another idea. So everything's on the table. I mean, the support for the DelGeady family seems very unified in the city, which is nice. The support he may not be getting from Canada was kind of announced today. It didn't look like they were getting a whole lot of support from Ottawa. Senator Peters sent a staff member there today, and Dan Lowers is going to be in town next week to talk about different ADA things that we might be able to do to help our businesses downtown and maybe try and, we might just have to look outside the box a little bit on how we do things in town here to get more people into town, to replenish those Canadians that we're going to be missing. And it's going to be interesting, I'd say the least. So hopefully, some of these ideas can sponsor some action in Ottawa and maybe get something done. But we'll see. I think we're moving in a good direction as a city. I'm really, you know, I'm hopeful that we can come up with something, a resolute, some way of working with either existing city offices or someplace new, but just to make something final instead of the 12 to 13 years of temporary movement. I hope we can move forward on that, and same with infrastructure. On that note, I'm going to ask for a motion to move into closed session to review a legal opinion regarding incompatible offices.
So moved. Support.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Lepley?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Vandabush?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
There may or may not be action taken upon returning to open session.